All right.
Do you copy? Yes, time to 6:30, call me if you want. First order business news from previous meeting on August 6. Question? Move a second. Any questions, comments, corrections? All of it. I do agree, a public comment. Any member of the public like to comment on anything this evening?
No. I just have a quick comment on an observation I had. I've been spending a lot of time at Hill School with my wife lately and the merger's coming together as the summer drops to a close. But there's an individual over there who is just hauling at every single thing on his list, and that's John Kennard. And I just want to recognize him publicly because I am amazed at the amount of things that guy is doing at once with a smile on his face the whole time. So hopefully you guys taking good care of him or he's taking good care of you in your building.
Thanks. What else? Sandra?
Dan, can I just, I noticed the bus service, that's why I'm here, so should I do my part now or should I wait till we get down to the bus service?
Do you have a comment regarding the bus service?
I do. Yeah, I do. Um, I received an email from Linda explaining that she was not going to be able to drop my daughter off at an after-school program that was just opened on Buck Street. It's an existing bus stop. Um, I know Patty and Suzie about it, so they're aware. Um, I don't have an alternative. My two older children, one's a freshman, one's a major, they're both are going to be playing soccer. They're not riding the bus home, they won't be home to get her off the bus. This was my alternative. I found an after-school program for her. Um, and I've had many dealings with Linda. I'm not, I understand that there's issues with bus service, but I just kind of would like maybe some insight into how I can actually get this to happen. I'm not asking for any bus stop. I am, all I'm asking for is for my daughter to get off the bus at 6:17 Buck Street, which is an existing bus stop now. Um, I mean, if she, if she, oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Um, I was going to ask when you last talked to Linda.
Um, I actually stopped communication with her when she said, um, there will be no further discussion about this.
When?
So that's when I emailed you, to each of you.
When was that?
Probably a week ago or so, and that's when I requested to be on the school.
Is this the new daycare that just opened up?
Yeah, it's a tiny village.
Okay. I think you're going to be on that site.
Oh, okay. Well, it's not, I learned that. I don't, we don't usually interact, but I need to, no.
Something go on this session.
No, that's fine. No, okay.
Well, then I guess.
That's great. I didn't get to you. Do they, what? No. Oh, I.
Okay, I want to do that.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Is there's going to be limited number of seats? So, but you should be fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else tonight like to comment? We'll have another opportunity to have a new topic. Watch, return item three, Jen.
Uh, we have one. We have one item under number nine. Um, we have one item under three C. We have need someone to mount public on here, B and D. And I have, um, three inflation.
Jeff, item three. Question?
Yeah, American Academy has been gifted an upright piano that has been kept in relatively pristine condition regularly to maintain. Um, we have uses for it, we have need for it in, um, one of our two music rooms where there's currently not piano. Um, so I work with Mr. Coughlin to make sure that that is something that we can be, uh, acceptable to take and certainly the understanding is that the owner is obligated in the process to receive the piano, maintain it, make sure that it's used in a budgetary work and, uh, make it as close to the time up in the life as we're on here.
Questions?
Um, I'm unclear about receiving the piano with that being, I mean, did you have the technical issue before?
Sure. The person donating the piano is a staff member who is getting a moving truck with a liftgate is having movers of phone bring the piano to the location and bring it into the building.
That's what I was going to say. Very much critical.
And another question?
But there is no liability.
We are not trying to take costalized stake.
The appendix told you to kick what's about a piano.
No, in Josh's group, we have nothing to do with piano.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anything else? Motion to retract. Like, please, all of it.
It looks like a really nice.
Three D, check the terms on it. Three D, caution based grading definition.
And I was able to pluck that into your garage, but you didn't get your email open.
Right. So as you're navigating for that, I'll just preface the, uh, presentation. Uh, you know, as I've presented to the board in the past, we have had some issues with calculation, uh, hard calculation method, uh, last year being mode. And there were unintended or unanticipated challenges that came up with that. And so we felt that we needed to address that in the upcoming school year. Uh, we looked at other, um, other calculation methods, including parallel and can the average, uh, mode in some other way. And, uh, we felt that the, the calculation method that we could best anticipate how it was going to be taken in traditional averaging. Uh, traditional averaging, I will admit, is philosophically probably a setback for us from a competency standpoint. However, it is also, um, I think needed at this point, given how tumultuous mode turned out to be for us last year. And, uh, Chris will talk a little bit more about our, uh, preparations for this upcoming year.
So as Dan said, I'm going to stand if that's all right with you guys. So as Dan said, um, we, we found the issues with mode, we heard the issues with mode, and as a result, you know, changes were made in order to move back to an average. We know that that is not necessarily best for kids, um, and that in a similar way, this system can be gained, uh, gained. Uh, so what we want to do though is we want to lay out a plan in order to, uh, to move forward and to, to get back to somewhere that we believe philosophically is a great place in a competency-based system and one that we think it, from our movement and our course of action, will be a practical, um, set of steps. So we want to lay that out for you guys. So we're going to look a little deeper than simply the numbers in this presentation. So feel free to follow along, um, in your packets. Thank you Patty for getting that over. So our current context is that we know that people have been struggling with, um, with the current calculation method. We saw instances of students playing the system whereby some students realized based on the way that mode calculates, that if they have a couple of threes and a four that they could, it was actually more beneficial for them to not take an F and to get a zero or a one, because with the mode system, it wouldn't have calculated, um, it wouldn't have hurt them. Um, it didn't factor into their central tendency. Um, so when that was the case, we saw people gaining the system. Um, and that frustrated teachers, um, I'm sure frustrated some kids as well, and we want to respond to that. Um, and, and high school, certainly the academy rather, has certainly done that. Um, and so, um, but the other thing, the other factor here in terms of our current context is teachers instead like, we get what this system is about. We want to do it and we want to do it right. So help us, how do we get there? Um, and as I saw the conversations unfolding, you know, as I listened and talked with teachers all around, um, the district and specifically at the high school and some even had the middle school, uh, what I heard was people saying, how can we get this right? Help us get there. What's the message we need to send? And I think that's the important part. Um, so if you were looking at slide three, the one with the, um, with the spaceship blasting off at the shuttle, um, it, it's where were we? We want to focus on where we were. Um, and just over a year ago, we were starting to really actualize the beginning of our journey. We were just taking off and we were really just starting, um, to, to see the fruits of what had been, uh, upwards of 10 years of conversation. Okay? And so we decided to move, we took action, we, once we implemented Alma, we didn't really have a choice either. We had to move and we had to move fast. Um, and so, uh, we thought big, we thought it's philosophically, um, kind of, uh, thinking about what it's best for students and we, we shot big and we, we shot for the moon. So we tried to do everything, uh, aligning with a competency-based ed system that would get us to that panacea, if you will, of, of how we want to do this. So again, the fact that we got Alma last year and we're implementing it, uh, we had to move quickly, we had to go quick. Um, we only provided the necessary PD. So it was things like, well, how are you going to enter your grades and what is that going to look like? Um, and by doing so, we didn't necessarily get everything that we wanted to instead. So we missed a little bit of the vision shift. Um, and if you go on to slide five, uh, actually slide six, I'm out of order on this. The vision is to implement a true competency-based system, uh, that accurately calculates student achievement to the body of evidence. Some people might say, well, what is the body of evidence? So that's looking at a system, it's, uh, um, it's looking at a student as a whole, not one test, not two tests, not even just tests, but homework, uh, classwork, conversations between teachers and kids, and getting a, the best sense as to what has the student learned, what do they know, what can they do? What can't they do? How have they grown? All of those questions, that's what we want to get, that's the vision that we want to share with teachers. So that's where we were just a year ago. So where are we now? If you go to slide, I think that was slide five. Yep. We're kind of stuck between two worlds. And as a result, we're not doing that panacea thing. We're not where we really want to be. We're not, uh, we're still not stuck in that old system that we know isn't best for kids, but we're not yet where we want to be. And so we believe it's going to take three to four years of very consistent messaging, a lot of really good work and hard work, um, to continue to build on where we started. And where teachers are at now is not a bad place, it's a really good place, it's just not that ultimate, um, um, place. So when we look at the two worlds that we're living in, we're in a traditional world and a competency-based world. In that traditional world, um, we're, we're looking at grades as a way of ranking and sorting, okay? Used for comparison. In a competency-based system, we don't have those things, it's not about that, it's about communication of growth. And teachers are really starting to move in that direction. They're starting to see that when we give an assessment, um, it's not about how did you score, it's about what's your depth of knowledge. So that, we're starting to see movement there, but we're not all there and we're not consistently there. In a traditional world, we're grading all assignments. We're not yet in that competency-based realm of looking at a body of evidence. We're looking at what are the things that students turned into? What are, what about the tests? What about the quizzes? We're not yet focused on that whole breadth of a picture of, of who a student is as a whole. We're only looking at certain pieces of evidence, not all of it. Um, in the traditional world, we're still calculating zeros. I was meeting with a group of, uh, teachers from the academy yesterday, and, um, this is a group of teachers that you would typically think of as pretty traditional, in fact, usually the most traditional. Um, and when we were talking about this, we were actually calibrating grades and scoring using a competency-based scale and a four-point rubric. Um, and they said, you know, we need to get rid of zeros in order to do this the right way. And they were 100% right. And hearing that from that group of teachers, I was blown away and really happy about it. It was a really cool moment. Um, in a traditional world, teaching and assessing, uh, we're teaching and assessing the same way we did before. So, um, we haven't changed our pedagogy necessarily, we haven't changed the assessments that we give, we haven't moved towards project-based learning, uh, or depth and inquiry-based learning. Those are things that have to be built in, uh, in order to do this to the best of our abilities. It's not saying we can't do what we're doing, but we know it can be better. Um, and last, in a traditional world, teachers are focused in, um, on the amount of work as opposed to the depth of knowledge that a kid shows. So where we want to get to, and this again is the work that I started or was doing with, uh, one of the high school departments, um, I've really been doing it all summer, is focusing in on what does it mean to get a four? What does it mean to get a three? And it's not about the percent you get correct, because we know, the stuff we've been talking about as a board and as administrator for a long time, a percentage doesn't show us what we know about certain things. It shows us how well we did on a breadth of a test. Um, it doesn't hone in and tell us, well, jeez, you're really good at this, but you still need to work on that. So we were working on that as a staff and we started to use a rubric that was focused in on depth of knowledge as opposed to percent correct. And again, very powerful, uh, professional development and conversation where teachers were asking really good questions and they're recognizing the fact, um, that it's not about getting 100% correct, it's about can you consistently and independently do this over many assessments, multiple assessments, over a period of time to show that you truly own that knowledge, to show that you truly own that material. And that's what this is all about. So if you go to our last slide, how would we get there? Again, I want to preface this and just say, we're not in a bad place by any stretch of the imagination. Just like anything else that's new, we're going through some growing pains. And no matter when we would have started using competencies and shooting for something as big as we did, we would have hit this roadblock. We absolutely would have, because we know that averaging isn't best for kids and that mode or power law are best, but we need to change our messaging. We need to make sure that kids and teachers are not seeing grading as, uh, a method of ranking and sorting, but as a measure of growth and learning. So in year one, our goal is to look at what makes a good assessment and focus on what is a body of evidence. So Dan and I, uh, we've met several times this summer about this, we've talked about it today, um, and over the next week, we're going to be coming up with a plan, um, in terms of specific dates, to start meeting with PLC groups and staff members to start talking about what does it mean to develop a body of evidence. In year two, we're going to focus on standards for success. This is something that some, um, departments are already working on. Um, I can think of two in particular, they, yeah, uh, who are already starting to develop rubrics based on their, their competencies and performance indicators that are focused in specifically on that depth of knowledge, not the percent correct. So as they see that, I'll tell you what, as I work with teachers around the entire SAU, every time they look at a rubric and we start to develop a rubric based on the criteria that's in our, our holistic SAU-wide rubric, they look at and they're like, oh, now I know what a three is. Or now I know the difference between a three and a four. So that's coming now. Um, and so we want to continue to build that with those who have already started and are ready, but until then, we need to break people in slowly, make sure that they get to that place. Um, and then year three, uh, walking the talk. So what does it look like in life without zeros, without ranking, without sorting? Okay? Um, remember, all of this work, all of it, um, is about changing a paradigm. This is a system that's been in place and has not been doing, serving all students best for 150 years. We're changing that paradigm. Um, and to be honest, we're in a really good place, we're out in front of a lot of people, we're learning from others' mistakes, we're learning from our mistakes, uh, and we're moving forward. Uh, but the most important part is we need to shift the message. And that starts with shifting the message for kids and it starts with shifting the message for teachers and making sure that everyone understands why we're doing this and specifically what we're doing in order to get to that vision.
So first, I guess I would say, I appreciate the administration kind of recognizing that mode wasn't working, being willing to pick that back. And too many times, you know, some cost files, see people say, oh, we did it, we got to stick with it. Um, I know changing back can be tumultuous too, but I appreciate that when you said this isn't working, go back to something that's at least stable and something to piece it out. That being said, um, how was the decision, I know it's here for some reason, how, where does the decision come from? Come from last, is that just like always, hey, when you take that always, you go to mode?
In Alma, there are multiple calculation methods you can choose from. Uh, mode is one of those. Uh, mode and power law aren't the two that are best in line with a competency-based grading system, a traditional averaging system. Uh, between those two, we felt like mode was, uh, going to be better than power law. Uh, power law, if you've ever seen, it's a very complex, uh, mathematical formula. Uh, we, I certainly didn't feel like we had enough time to get around work together to effectively roll that out where every stakeholder could have an understanding of what power law was. Mode was a little simpler to get a handle on, but, you know, as I had said, uh, there were certainly unanticipated consequences and, you know, I would speak to a, a parent, I would say, you know, call and say, my son is telling me that he does not need to take this assessment tomorrow because it won't hurt his grades and I need you to tell me he's wrong. And, and so, you know, technically, he should take that assessment because it's not this binary enterprise where it's either a four or a zero. But, you know, Chris Ryan said this too, any system that fosters that line of thinking with our students is probably something to teach their behavior. And so we feel, you know, like averaging, at least for now, is something that we can anticipate how it will behave while we work on supporting the staff on the other facets of the competency-based transition.
And this is maybe jumping ahead three years, I don't know what class line, but when you do get to a fully competency-based system, there's a couple of edges we'll have to take right out of it. Um, our college admissions offices starting to ignore rank, they don't care so much, or?
I could talk a little bit about that.
Yeah.
Um, there are some high schools in the area that don't have classroom. I'm always one of those. Um, we could go in that, uh, in that, you know, line of thinking, uh, it is philosophically in line with competency-based to not have class rating. But a caveat that I will share is that if we go with that route, we would have to pay that and we would have to pay that in over four years because to me it's not, it's not fair to any student or family to say, you know, your son is a junior, but next year we're not going to have class rating, but they've been working towards that goal. So it would be something that, you know, we would have to face in overtime.
I read an article last week on vacation because I'm a huge door. Um, and, uh, it was all about colleges' perspectives on competency-based systems. And, um, not that I haven't read these before, but this one was new. Um, and it talked about, it was recent research that was done, um, and there was, uh, the dean of admissions from Harvard was, was interviewed and basically that dean said, it's not beholden to high schools to do what we necessarily have done in the past, it's our responsibility as admissions reps to, um, go out and learn more about the schools and why they're doing what they're doing. It doesn't matter what system, all of our schools, even in our state, do something different. And our kids consistently in this state go on to amazing places. Uh, it's about what kids are doing, their extracurriculars, all those other factors. And it's up to the colleges, um, to look at school profiles and understand why this school does what it does in terms of grading. So it is one of the things that colleges in their admissions department take on that role and that responsibility. So, yeah.
That does fine. I'm writing questions, I apologize.
I'm sorry. Um, I follow up on Andy's and I have one or two on my own. And the follow-up to Andy's that can do with class ranking, and I can appreciate that Harvard may kind of look the other way and I can also appreciate that other students as well when we may do that. However, what about scholarship committees and scholarship listings? I mean, it's not just the high schools. Kids applying for scholarships and they're competing with other students who maybe are in this somewhat more traditional mode and some student can put down that they are ranked number five in their class. Will, are, you know, how are our students going to be able to compete? I guess where I'm ultimately kind of going with this is do we have a plan maybe to have some sort of attachment to any, anything that will explain, you know, this is who we are, it, you know, cause it's what you've said, so that the fact that our kids don't have a ranking of one to 20 or the top 25% is not going to be a variable.
So I think as we continue to see this become, uh, a system that more and more schools across the country using, that is still the case, um, the, the movement towards competency-based roles, um, you're, one thing that, um, I would say is again, it's about the messaging. And so as we start to think about how our kids talk about school, it shouldn't be about, well, I'm number five in the class, it's, wow, I started out by getting twos and threes or threes and now I'm getting threes and fours. And, and again, that school profile tells what that is, but also a student can talk about what that is in an application for a scholarship or something like that. Most of, most scholarships that I've ever seen at least, even the merit-based ones, always add to students about some level of growth, some challenge that they think. Um, so I, I think coupled with a school profile and the understanding of what we do, a student's explanation of, from a grading standpoint, an academic standpoint of how they've grown, that's what most of those places are, how most of the scholarships are looking for.
I would also stand that, you know, I spoke to the director of guidance, Bo, and in part because they don't have rank, and she had said that it, it opens up a lot of scholarships for students because in many cases, they can check out, our school doesn't rank, right? And that there are actually, you know, more scholarships that are providing that. I would say that, you know, when we continue down this road, more concerted research in that area, I would feel more comfortable with more research regionally on it, but, um, it's certainly something that they're going to handle there. But again, more research.
All of them on my own?
Sure.
Okay. Um, you address the rubric. Um, I'm kind of curious, at this point, we're working towards, um, you know, well, actually have implemented competencies, do we have usable, um, departmental rubrics that teachers, that all teachers are using? And I'm worried that when they have them, but not everyone is using them. And I guess I just need to be reassured then that everybody's on board with this because if messaging is important, and obviously it is, teachers have to lead the way.
Yeah, and, and we do have, uh, you know, like rubrics that are used throughout departments, particularly in departments with courses with multiple sections. For instance, we have probably 11 section of global studies. And it's important that there's fidelity and that there's consistent experience for all of our students in all of those sections to include the way in which they're assessed. Uh, so absolutely. I will say that, you know, as an organization, we go through this transition, similar to Oregon Trail, some people are, you know, started in the middle of the country and some people start way back and it's just a long way to go to get there. And so, you know, part of our job is to assist and provide scaffolding for staff members that need more support or get there. And I would say that the rubrics that are departmental, uh, used in a departmentally-wide sense are helpful supports for those that are experiencing this.
I can appreciate that the humanities, those probably have them. I guess I'm concerned about STEM, science, math, technology, do we have workable, universal, you know, totally accepted movies there? Because I think in order to really push this very forward and make the messages clear and consistent, all departments, not just the humanities, maybe.
There's been a lot of work with that, Jen, Brian, Sanders, and, um, in our building and in part in the implementation of that curriculum is developing the assessments that will be used throughout biology, another example, you can replace global studies that we admit that is biology, that is, and, you know, Chris has mentioned that he's, we want to talk about your work with the math department.
Yeah, so, um, the math department earlier this summer, basically, um, you know, they, they reached out and they said, more or less, like, we really need to jump in, we really need to move. Um, and so- And so when Jeanne and I spoke, she said, I really need help on this rubric thing because I, it all came up kind of in a strange way, but I had said to, to some of them, I said, you know, this whole level drop thing is not right because you're still basing a number, this, this scaled number of one, two, three, or four, hundred percent correct in a way, and how many you got wrong, when that's not really what our four-point scale is about. And so we started developing rubrics based on their performance in the years. And Jeanne and about five of the other math teachers at the time, I think I was seven because there were two that had, that gone, we all worked on, on several rubrics. And then they continued the work throughout the summer. We met this yesterday, and the work that we did was, we, we continued to go through some of the growing pain and the struggles, like, well, what about this? Like, we don't see how this could be a four, it'd be the right or wrong. And we started again, going back to its depth of knowledge. It can a student analyze and articulate and synthesize and transfer this or put it into practice in a, in an applicable way. So that was one component. And they've done that for, I think, all of their courses at this point. And then the other component was that, that went into it. And I think it speaks of their dedication, that they think, you know what, we want to calibrate. We want to calibrate our scoring blindly and see how close we would be in this new, this really new rubric-based system. And the first time we went through it, we talked it out, like any good coach or teacher, we kind of, we finagled, and when we did it live for a second round, they were absolutely calibrated probably about ninety-seven percent all of a sudden. That was really amazing to see the way that they had really taken to the rubric and were able to score and be consistent. So that means that that algebra, the three in an Algebra I test or project would be the same from this class to the next, to the next, to the next. And that's really, really easy. It's really hard work, but powerful work too. And they did it, and they're going to continue to do it. We are going to continue to do it.
Could you explain what's the technical average?
Say again? How we're going to average?
How do you do?
We will.
Do I know more statistics because of my question?
Yeah.
So you have each competency, I, I mean, you have a level of class. Are you going to average each competency and then average the averages?
Yeah.
That I agree with you on?
Yeah. Yeah. So we'll have, before at a competency level, we determine calculation by mode, but then all of those grades got averaged together to make the holistic grade. That second portion is remaining instead of mode where it relates to average. So if you're right, then it's, we're averaging competency grades, and then we're averaging ability grades together to come up with the holistic grade for classes.
How, and you may have already dealt with this, there were instances last year where assessments were provided, five or six, just didn't happen for them. They, they didn't raise some level of any of the students in the course. If you average that into the mix with everything else, you're skewing the average out of the without.
Well, we, as you can imagine, had some growing pain last year, and we developed some maxims to kind of help guide the entire staff as we went through this. One of them was point and doubt here on the side of the student. And we reviewed that over and over again. Another one was, we can't set artificial limits on students' grades. So for instance, we can't have, whether it's formative or not, we can't have an assignment where a student can't win at its form. That didn't seem like it was in line with our, you know, philosophy of supporting students. And if that's the case, that they can only get a two on it, then why are we A assigning it or B assessing it? Right? Like, maybe it's just a check off, you know, you got the signature page done, like it's fine, right? So we are not supportive, and we shared that expectation with staff, that any assignment students need to be able to get, in full spec, in opportunity with full spec.
And this is exactly kind of one of the issues that teachers keep asking about. They're like, well, how do we move? One thing, and I talked about this today, as we change the message, we've got to make sure, again, that teachers realize that this isn't about that line assessment, it's about a body of evidence that's tied to competence. So if we start looking not at the assessment, the single assessment itself, but at the competency, we have opportunities throughout the year, those multiple measures over time, where maybe one thing can't reach, maybe a test, a paper and pencil test can't reach a four, but later on, we're setting that same competency with a project that is hands-on, authentic, deep, in-depth, that would allow for a four. You know, in this system, in the way all the works, you can actually go back and change, it's about the competency grade, not the assessment grade. So we can, if we stay focused on the competency, you can actually build in that opportunity for the four, and a student wouldn't be harmed. In fact, it opens up that door in a, in a really positive way, I can say.
You don't see, I'm not being fair. I'm trying, trying to be.
You would have something up for it, fine.
Yeah. I'm, I'm going to like, um, gee, nah, if one of my feelings is.
That's kind of the road I would be going onto. I just feel, it's a philosophy that, you know, I, I keep coming back to the use of the term shooting for the moon. And I think what the key is all is simplicity. And it just sounds, I mean, not being in your position, way over my head as far as this goes, but simplicity, I think, moving forward is going to be the key to making the kids or students, keeping the students from gaming the system. And Jolene Phillips, you know, right off the bat, they knew what was going on last year, you know, they figured it out. You know, so simplicity, simplicity side of it is going to be key to moving forward and this philosophy, and not, maybe not strictly adhering to the philosophy. Going back to what Pat and Andy had said, you know, about the ranking, what's, just roughly, what's the percentage of kids that come out of PA that go to college?
Uh, two or four here. We're higher than state average from combined bowl.
Okay.
So we're higher than state average in two-year, but we're lower, you know, forty. So we're thirty percent higher than that, so whatever.
So forty-five, so there's a whole population that really doesn't care about ranking. So yeah, getting rid of it may not be a bad thing, but in the real world, ranking and sorting and grading is the thing. And if these kids aren't exposed to that here, when they, they're, it's not communal out there, everybody's not the same, they're going to have a, a reweighting. So that going away, I think, would be doing them a disservice moving forward, whether they're going to college or whether they're going to infantry. They need to know that there are rewards for hard work and penalties for, for not working hard. So ranking zeros, doing good out there. You know, it'd be great if they didn't, it'd be great if we didn't have to worry about them, but you know what, there are, there's zeros that you see them every day. So, and I, I, I hope that you wouldn't stick too rigidly to the philosophy moving forward, knowing that there is a real world out there, that these kids are going to be exposed to soon enough. And nothing both of it are up to you, but, you know, that's where I'm, I'm looking at this. It's not, not, I'm not too fond of it. And we're talking about students getting up behind in the past, and I think they're still going to be up behind depending on what you did. And I think you have to keep that bar high to get as many over that bar as you possibly can. You are going to lose some, but the bar being high is going to be better for them alone.
My experience with competencies, and I, obviously like all this, I'm very traditional, competencies is making it a lot more challenging for students. There's no question about.
All for that. If they have to work hard and learn more, absolutely.
There's no question in my mind it's more challenging for students.
What I fear is that we're making students work in areas where they're not strong, we're not giving them opportunities to focus on areas where they're, they're strong. So when they get, when they get out in the real world, those skills that they're really good at, that they should have been honing in high school, they have not been honing because of the working on things that they're not as good at.
I'd say it's the opposite, to be honest with you. Because I think if, if they're given, Chris talked about competency-based learning, that's when, it's not teacher-directed as much as, what's he, what, what can you do really well when you're putting into this project? And that's where we really begin to handle it. We get a master project, we get a nice kid in middle school, and some kid that can't do the math and paper well, that can't draw well, came up with some pushy and major stuff in their way, and they chose the way they learned and their style, and it was pretty amazing what some of those kids did. The traditional tests were not a problem.
I talked about that, the whole idea that we're still teaching and learning and assessing in the same way, and that's part of that shift in this three-year plan, is really to make sure that we are focusing in on different ways of doing things. Because when we sit as teachers and we, we spit out and expect kids to recurgitate, that's not challenging them. That's not asking for them to face things in a more difficult way. We need to develop learning that is focusing their team work. That makes them, that we ask questions, and when they say, well, I don't get it, that's not good enough. We ask another question to help prompt their thinking and to prompt their, their minds to say, oh, yeah, what if, and we, it's our job as teachers to make sure that we continue to ask those questions and not give the answers. So I, I think as we move into this, into this plan, the whole idea of making that shift so that it is raising the bar. Because right now, in a traditional system, it's the flyby. And our message, the message that we need kids to hear is that we're not allowing this flyby. In this system, I need evidence to say that you are competent. And if you don't give me that evidence, I don't have anything to say like, yeah, you're good, or no, you're not. Like, I demand that in order to, to push you forward in, in whatever you're strong at or are weak at. And that's really what this is about. So I think, most importantly, Jeanne, you said, you know, what, what was it about, oh, shooting for the moon, which was my turn. When I say shooting for the moon, I mean doing what's right and best for all of us. And that's what we're up for, and all of us around the table are.
Yeah, that's.
And we've got to keep, keep that as our, as our focus. And I think doing all these things gets it to that place.
And, and, and I firmly believe, yeah, for the kids, you should be shooting for the stars, but, and I was kind of looking at it both ways, for the kid, but also for this, the success of progress, you know, you were shooting for the stars on it and, you know, keeping the, the way you do it simpler. Make it easier for everybody, but, you know, pushing to get to yourself, obviously. Chris, I guess maybe this is just a summary, I think, kind of, some of what Jeanne said and went back to what I was talking about with ranking and things like that, I guess I would just look for it, you not, maybe you aren't already. I think I get the idea of this, right? And in my, I have an organized team. I, I hate that a requirement to get a job in my department is to badge a degree. Because I know seventeen-year-old kids that can come in and do a lot better than the guy who's already in it. So the interview where I need to know that person, find out what they really know, the competency, is the most important thing. And I do think that's the way the world is heading. But I think that's something that we should keep in mind, the ranking, our college is still going to be a ranking. That whole thing is that we need to keep what we're doing in line with what's happening out there. Because I think that's the general trend, but we don't want to get there before, before the world does, and, you know, and our kids are so advanced, they're behind.
Maybe else?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, sure.
I, I guess for me, I just want to sum it up, and very simplistically, but I think it's the way I understand it, is that in the traditional system, kid can pass, kid can get a B, English language job, maybe skip the part on capitalization, pass the year with B, and know nothing about capitalization. And that weight carries with them throughout the year. I get in my understanding, you said, a little bit, and competency-based system, to be competent means that every target has to be hit at some proficient level. And it's less likely, it's probably not going to happen, that somebody's going to miss that particular part because they have to demonstrate a level of competency in all areas of a particular curriculum. Does that make sense? Which is why I want to.
That looks like it's a lot.
And you want me to.
Do you want to add a question?
Okay.
John?
Thank you.
Teacher evaluation.
I will try to be.
Teacher evaluation.
So, you know, I, I think as we are all on to do at the end of the year, we should reflect on areas that we can try to improve on. And constantly, I would say consistently in the past two years, there's been ways in which we could improve our teacher evaluation role, to make it more efficient and to also provide more opportunity for teachers to have direction in that. And so what I mean by that is having a self-assessment that frames the conversation around areas in which the teacher has identified that they need to work on. And then there's conversation with the, you know, in a P E-based, the department administrator to talk about that and then to evaluate that over the course of the year. So we looked at a model where we would, and, is anyone else?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So if you look at Table one, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, that, that is currently our model. And at our K to twelve leadership retreat, we drafted this model here, which has self-evaluation, has a self-aval, prior to meeting in the spring, still features the SLO, the student learning objective, however, that becomes more of a part of this, the teacher's three-year plan. And, you know, they are collecting data. And what's nice about that is you can start to look at data in a longitudinal perspective. It's not dependent on just the students you have that one year, if we're looking at it a little bit through the years, and trying to identify trends. In addition to that, you know, we would have one announced observation for our non-tenure teachers, the one unannounced for our tenure teachers that are in their recertification year, and then these walkthroughs. The walkthroughs, if you're looking at the difference between a mini observation and walkthrough, the way we've designed the mini observations in the past few years has been going in with a repeated Danielson model and, you know, identity, checking off those things. You know, walkthrough allows us to do more narrative and to speak directly to the conversations we've had with that teacher through the self-checkup. Still predicated on Danielson, but it's not so much checking off things on a rubric that is, you know, providing notes under each document. We then met with DAP leadership to, you know, get their suggestions on these changes. And through that meeting, they actually thought that it would be helpful to break up the grouping of non-tenured to non-tenured and non-tenured beginner educators. Because there is a difference between an experienced teacher coming in, that's fifteen years under their belt, and they come in, opposed to someone that's new to education and maybe additional support. So their feedback was, make a distinction between those two groups and then offer additional opportunities for feedback for the beginner educator.
I, I, I just wanted to know what the data of the model is.
So Charlie Danielson, she made a ton of money by a book about teacher evaluation. And there are four whole names, and within those whole names are, I would call them exhaustive, other people would call it a comprehensive, a list of, you know, essentially a rubric of all the different things. What happens in a mini observation, we go in and in the course of half a class, a lot of those things may not apply, just based on what's happening in the class. And we're kind of, in some cases, forcing around taking a square hole. And it says narrative will have to be more in the class and provide constructive feedback based on what's occurring in the class. we'll have to be more in the class and provide constructive feedback based on what's occurring in the class, not just, you know, being tied down to what Danielson's offering us for options. That in turn makes this less of a transaction and more of a meaningful observation and feedback based on practice.
It's before it's been a transaction. Then we go and we sit and we...
Check the logs, yeah.
And it's lengthy. I mean, this isn't like a one-page. So if, you know, we spend it off and we hopefully enable that teacher. And I think this gives us a conversation, I don't think, it will give us conversation with staff and how they can grow. And that's really what it's about. We still have to think about this, I think.
But like, the return on the investment was low in that it was, just like Paul said, was transactional, it was one way. If you had any follow-up, it wasn't necessary under this model. Whereas being able to have a conversation in the fall and in the spring, talking about what we saw in the class and what they experienced, there's a lot more points that can happen versus us spending a lot of time on things that a teacher will look at and that's that. That's, that's a hard decision.
The, the, the teachers at any time, they end up asking us to go do an additional observation and we end up asking them to go do another observation. So it's not like it's only this, but including that. We felt something needed more support, we're going to be in there to continue this with that. And we, we do get staff and say, "Can you come and watch this slide?" And we give you feedback. It's open for that also.
Tenured staff is not in year one or two or maybe recertified, not getting evaluation off? Not the pre?
No, they've got, they've helped them out, but then there's also a walkthrough. But they have addition to their three-year plan.
Also...
Are you talking about the 1920 proposed?
I'm talking about 1920 proposed. So you have tenured teachers in year one or two after the tenure. The tenure teachers that are in the year of recertification. What about the rest of the tenure teachers?
Well, it's, it restarts over the first year, so they're in that cycle.
You reuse it, no matter how many years you work here. It's not how long you've been tenured.
It's not how long you've been tenured, not how long you're in the sort of position.
Well, that, right.
Got it, that makes more sense, okay. All right.
We like to call them the free, clear ground.
Well, that's what I'm thinking here. Okay, that makes more sense.
Okay.
That is...
I've got a question, okay? I, certainly I'm next to the end of the stuff. Just the observation that I see here is that non-tenure, in last year's model, there appears to be seven points of evaluation. And in 1920, as well, there's five. That, and they appear in the same time where people look at that. And then, what, where's the, what builds that gap? I mean, going from seven to five, there's a very large difference. Are we losing something there? Well, if we take away, we'll talk about the SLO meaning in a moment. But you have, in the prior model, you have one announced formal, one unannounced formal, and one mini observation. In the 1920, we have one announced formal and those two walkthroughs, which are unannounced. So even though they're not identical, there is similar amount of time spent in the classroom with the teachers. And then, you know, the SLO, we really want to try, because of that whole idea of looking at the data over the course of three years instead of just based on the students you have this one year. So, you know, we do meet with teachers regarding their three-year plan and what they need to tie them up after three years or what we need to instruct them at the beginning of the next cycle. So that's not on the plus, but that does happen. In addition to that, you know, we're trying to, you know, take away those initial SLO meetings, benchmark meetings, and instead replace those with these self-eval benchmarks. So you're right, there is a little less, but I think it's not quite as inorganic as it may look. There's much of a disparity there. Others?
Yeah, just one quick question. These observations, are these all targeted to be done prior to the submission of names to the board for...
Yeah.
Okay, so those are all therefore taken into consideration? They're all done prior to...
Thank you, was that what I said before? We feel like we need to get, give them more support.
Right.
Where do we do that and talk about it?
Thank you. Board does approve evaluation. So we, we look into what we can do to help.
Most group.
Okay. And then your questions, comments? All okay?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, gee, board call review. We have a chance to review. Thoughts, questions, comments? Very impressive, right? Probably a more than one-year plan. I don't know that these are all the options, to be honest. Coming from someone with experience on the board, I think. But I, I realize he's probably certainly on here, but I think maybe a little bit of reality check, this may not be just 1920, which is, which is okay.
I think we probably need to take action.
Yes, we do.
And I have a motion that we put some in the script.
Okay, Gene? Any other questions, comments, thoughts? All okay? And we have said we will put these on agenda one more. We tend to track them. So this discussion was asked by another bus company.
Yep, it was very similar comments I've heard from the community that there are some, at the beginning of the year, questions, kids are not being allowed to be dropped off at 11:00. We have tons of failings, and that's kids get off to places that pay, spending some needs and things like that. And I, I started taking back in my memory banks. I just want to kind of say what I understand of the situation of bus company and see if it's giant, if it's vanity, and see if I understand kind of what's going on. I, I think I understand that there's a few bus companies, but that they're extremely territorial, that they will not even really bid on contracts outside of their general area. And for that reason, we've been kind of stuck with one. Whether it's like the time, or what they can do, we don't have really much room for. I mean, they, they can kind of dictate beginning of daytime, end of daytimes, drop off things. Is that fairly accurate?
I don't think it's quite as grim as that. But yes, it's something, right? We would put this out to the, we probably put this out to the couple of years ago now. And yeah, the bus companies tend not to step on into each other's territory. I would say we get one dig, if one dig contains bus company. With that said, we have, in the past, when we've had issues with the bus company, we've had key conversations back and forth with the bus company at times. But generally speaking, it has moved a lot of cases. What's very normal that you're talking about?
I agree with that. And there is a policy, and actually if you had a chance to look, I certainly don't have to summarize. But the board has booked it, that policy over the past several years. And that was one of, one of the most recent cases. I even think of somebody wanted to go to Free River from P A to be able to get the bus home. So the board made an allowance that if there are some of us, um, I think let's put this question to the bus company. So within your policy, certainly you have to anyway. You know, with, with after-school programs, my suggestion was if there's a room on the bus, and then it's okay for kids to go there, you may have to say, "Hey, I only have five extra people on that bus." If you get more than that, it's full.
Yes, as I recall, a few years ago, what happened is we shrunk kind of the number of bus runs we were doing down. And, you know, Jimmy, am I going to pick up? Jimmy was picked up on Broadway in the morning, and then we wanted him dropped off on Pembroke Hill in the afternoon. We're having a hard time accommodating the act of just boarding up students. And that's kind of where we got into that, that issue. We had a really tough one for the board as well, but that's what we ultimately ended up having to do.
I think it was also a baby issue. We had a lot of, you know, "Okay, my kid goes here for two days." "Oh, but anybody's going to Jimmy's," and call them right before they're on the way out the door. "No, don't have to take this." It, it, you can't do that. It's too much to manage, and it's too dangerous for kids. So we put a lot of things placed up, the core of, you know, time limits, that you have to call me off at five, what's the policy, and we're just trying to sort of changing the bus. So look at that policy, and that is certainly what we put on the agenda.
Yeah, we built in flexibility, you know, when you're ready, necessary. We take it as basis, but in order to keep costs relatively reasonable, we had to kind of tighten up the system a little bit. Is there other questions? I think so. Anyone else?
Board reports. Okay, it's done after next time, maybe it's time after.
We'll do our best to do it.
No problem. The T R S.
You mean that one?
N R S Joint Tuition Committee Report.
I don't remember the name. He said, "Please, John, show us." I'm going to be brief, and then have John kind of paint the rest of the picture. We met. Folks seemed to focus on a couple of issues. One of them was the cost per pupil that Allenstown appeared to have and what Pembroke has based on the numbers that were provided to us. Because the figures just seem really out of line. The cost per pupil for Allenstown was four fifty thousand per student for T R S. And yet for Pembroke, it was thirteen thousand. And... Yeah, but I mean, the disparity is, you know, you could have said twenty thousand. Well, but those are the numbers that were provided to the chair. And for the folks who were there, and for a nice group of about ten people, they, they were very concerned about that. And that seemed to drive the conversation.
You mean the disparity in the cost per pupil between Allenstown and Allenstown?
Right, and the Allenstown folks were just...
Turned across, turned across the thing, or they... What the state that came over.
It varied widely around the state, it's amazing.
Okay. What was the number again?
Approximately...
So forty-nine thousand, probably.
Yeah.
What was it?
What?
That's not right.
They only send fifty thousand per kid.
I know that. But I think what they did, what I feel like they did, was they took the whole budget of Allenstown, and divided it in half. And then took how many students were at the R S and then divided that out. That was what was presented.
Right.
I think the numbers are... I, I, I think, I think they are different. I will say that any information like that, research, is that Allenstown pays more per student. Why not pay that, why not pay that more? How much more? Okay.
But these are the numbers that were provided, so that immediately got a bit of attention. John, you...
Kathy prepared cost per pupil numbers, so I don't know where that went.
Okay. I'll catch on that. Thank you.
Do you want the exact number from last year?
Yes.
Seventeen, two forty for Allenstown.
And fifteen.
I'll, I'll check on the first year, I'm not sure.
That's unequalized? I think, I think it's around, after equalization, I think it was like around thirteen.
That's the, the published number for...
And I think for our study, it's important to be using the same calibration, whether that is...
We need to keep in mind that if Allenstown students came here, the cost per pupil would not be, it would be lower because you're providing more kids. So it's not like whatever our published number is, is what they're going to pay.
But I think that's how it goes down significantly, frankly.
We don't know. That's the negotiation.
We were the necessarily judge of Allenstown, so you could say one of the judges over there. We could judge any of the reasons.
No, but those are all numbers that were presented to us.
And that got everybody's attention.
I find that very interesting.
John gave a wonderful talk, and that got everybody's attention as well. Folks were amazed and impressed what's on the other side of the river. So, I mean, it certainly had compelling conversation. John was a master dancer when the, oh, wait, why don't speak?
I'm not going to say, I'm not going to speak.
Because part of the conversation was, "When can we do this?" And tell me to do it now. And, yeah, well, and that's where John danced. Because he never came out and said, "No." But by the same token, just tried to reiterate all of the steps that had to, had to happen sequentially and in a rather repetitive period of time. Am I right?
Yeah.
I just showed off that clip.
Because the town of Pembroke, although we have some kind of need to, I figure that's something the town wants to do. I don't think, or my thought maybe I made that note.
And that's what we said it needed, was one of the many steps that we pointed out.
And one of the things that, you know, I tried to say there, but I, I need your lead on how much research I'm going to start doing. There's one thing to say, I know, whatever amount of kids, a hundred, a hundred and ten students. You know, you can look at a total of moments and say, "Yeah, that's fit." Well, maybe not this. So I have to get some kind of, before I spend a lot of time putting together schedules and class size potentially, and what impacts that, but, I mean, I've got some ideas that I can share down the road in close class. And lots of bolts of this is going to be pretty, pretty detailed. And it's important, I have no problem putting that time in, but we're, we're putting it with a pretty massive project. And I mean, at the same time, I think that's the only way we're going to be able to be honest. To really like to build something, to be fair, it is to do it. Take the money out, because everyone knows we're talking about bringing it to do it.
Okay, I know you kind of jumped in, but I just wanted to show everyone actually what we're talking about. Okay. Go ahead. Are you good?
No, no, I'm, I'm just looking for my notes to talk about the actual... They were the Allenstown folks, so the committee folks, the folks who were there, were interested in knowing how we went about it, what our time was going through. And we pointed out that, you know, it had taken well over a year of conversations, of meeting, and planning. And that to think that a town that is an S B two town, with a higher budgetary frame than we have, that it really has to be cautious in how they...
Those are the folks who don't have town rules and can't have discussions. You know, as much as you advertise a liberal discussion, twenty-five people could come and show up. It could be in full on, but five hundred are voting. And just reading it, I'm more, without the information.
It's important to note that regardless of what happens, whether they drop or not, there's going to be some change. So I mean, most of the people that we really need to sit down and really talk about is both will be, both will affect the school and some both may be affected. I think we have to really sit down. That's why at some point I'll be looking for some direction as far as how far and what depth going to start looking at the impacts of both.
Good question.
Totally.
We will be meeting again next, I think, beginning of September, September... We will be meeting again next, I think, beginning of September, September or...
Sure, sure, watch him up.
It depends on, I think, what this group suggests, but I'm a point of vision direction in, but I think that I would like to be able to go back to the meeting with the sense of, oh, sure, you want to put together a proposal between now and Halloween and we'll go for that the next time, but if we wanted to tell them that we need to pump some brakes and have information needed for, for Allentown, for Pembroke, and to really study this plan, to give John an opportunity to put together opportunities and options. I don't know how it gets done in April. And I didn't want to say anything until we had an opportunity. Yeah, right, and that's why I said, I think you did really well, but it was kind of tight because there were folks who really, you know, wanted to, they were still...
Do you have a sense of...
The people...
Well, I mean, I, I guess my type of phrase is thinking three years out. I, I just, I, I won't be able to deal with that now, but I, I just, I, I just don't see how you could almost piece it together for the next, the next year. I, I just don't see it.
I'd do it before March. Kind of has to be put together before November.
In a week, if we have budget, Allentown...
I, I don't think Pembroke would be prepared to make that kind of decision before the session. I mean, you know, I, I just don't, I just can't, I can't see it.
So is it fair to say that if the next meeting is like three weeks, two weeks, that we can go back and say, or I can go back and say, the, it might not be straight, twenty twenty-one is not feasible?
I don't think that twenty twenty-one is possible. I mean, to do it right and fail for the community, I don't think, we need to rush. I mean, I understand Allentown's perspective on it, but I don't think there's an issue that we want to rush into blindly and take consequences for it. I think the community really evolved to make this decision, probably along the way I called it, happened going on. I, I just don't think anyone can get that done by twenty twenty-one. And I honestly think that the process, as soon as you know what, the process will take care of that at least, because I think there's so many pieces that are involved that, I mean, I, you know, just thinking at the building level, I can look at, essentially two or three different schedules just for one year, you know, depending, depending on how many kids, where they go with, that alone and his class size is going to be quite a, quite a battle. I mean, we did it truly to get to this, in reality. But I think the process goes...
And I think we did okay, but I don't think it's...
Yeah, I can stipulate, we probably actually went, we did great job, you know, we did great, but it took us two years to get done, we did it.
Yeah, I guess I would just echo that and, I mean, they, like you said, they've asked our advice a few times because of the successful committee before, and my advice to them would be, you know, public sentiment too, and one thing, we ended up going with a very similar plan to what was laid out very early in the other process, but the community wasn't comfortable with that until all of these happened, all of these, and then, you know, we got to the same point, but right off the bat, they're not going to have the communities on their side if they try to, it's not going to be in their best interest to try to do it that way. I think one of the things to be able to look at too, because Allentown has one of the, the tenor population, that the numbers have to be, we have to put a mechanism in the midbrain, and that's going to take time to ensure that we get the students that they call.
We talked about that.
You know, and that's, I think, that's going to be, as far as the town goes, you know, set aside the school population and, you know, the scheduling and all that, but as far as the town goes, when you go to budget, you know, if they, a hundred and twenty kids are coming, seven to five show up, you know, boom. So...
There are a lot of these, there's going to be a lot of these, you're right, this process is going to... Well, like I said, you know, just sort of, you know, looking at our own, just taking Allentown out of it, there's going to be potentially some significant changes happening between the groups, but I think we're going to have that conversation about also.
Right. Do the what?
Do an example, we have ninety-one in sixth grade and sixty-three in fifth grade. So that's a tremendous drop. And what is that going to do to this program? Does that, those groups go through, does that keep system throughout, all the way down the chain?
Um, but then it's going to give some backup.
Yeah.
We, I mean, I was going to say, it's not a special report, eight thirty-two enrolled in the last two, in their school. And then of course there's the potential construction, kind of all of it.
I think, to be honest, there's, there's quite, keeping all that instruction in bed. I was going to...
I was going to say, but I'm lying.
Raise the rate of the, oh, but, but that's, that means on tours, and just bottom up and out, but that's been a great break.
Right.
People need to bottom down in detail, but we're just...
Yeah, I mean, keep up, but I think that message, I think this we have to deliver to, to help with that, but I, we don't see twenty twenty-one as a viable... I'm not sure, you know, I hear whispers of course, and I, I think most people are being realistic and thinking that, you know, pushing something up by November is probably going to happen. I will tell you a couple funny stories though, what's out there, so we have to do something. I mean, I, I said, people come in and rescue their child, that's not really, that is not what's happening.
Actually, they can show up on Monday.
There are some, the real concerns that the Allentown folks had about if, if and when, if this does go through, basically the right first refusal for Allentown folks, if there are openings, and we have pointed out that we, you know, have to rely on the C D S.
Seven, seven.
Yeah, the staff, I mean, there's a concern about, well, you know, these folks work for us and if you need an additional fifth grade teacher, if you need an eighth grade teacher, whatever, like eighth grade, sixth grade, you know, will be, you know, will you take an Allentown teacher and it's like, like the bargaining agreement dictates what that process looks like.
Because that's a detail we have to manage.
Right, but those were just, and it's kind of like the birdshot approach, there's so many questions and they all just get thrown up against the wall.
True, true.
Yeah.
Because you're going to the process, that's what it should be.
Mm-hmm.
No. You good? You all good? Budget committee and nothing, anything true?
Nope.
Case report? We have a case report.
Yeah.
I'm going to talk to Karen.
I wrote that.
It's part of, they had a three hour meeting, which consisted partially of a tour of the facility, which she raised about, and that's all there.
I know there's been, we started to express that the P board doesn't have a representative on the board, you know, but he couldn't figure out, he established that to get over that in some way.
Well, we do have somebody, we did point it.
When, when are you going to get?
Monday night, maybe.
I think they've scaled back the commitment as well, I don't know if they're quarterly or whatever, every two months, I don't know how they reschedule, but it's different than what it was in the past.
It would, it'd be nice maybe to have a, a backup, so if one person can't make it, then there would be someone else that could, you know, in the Bible, but we've done so well.
We haven't sent someone to watch. So just give me a schedule, I'll go. If you want to nominate, change it.
I will nominate Shane and secondary to the primary, because we are volunteer, first serving community and there's a primary twenty, who volunteered for that and I do not want to afford to step in and say, you're not doing that anymore, it's unfair, but to certainly point a secondary name for it.
Any other questions? All there?
Uh...
It's time to change.
Sure, that's true.
I, I, I wouldn't buy, I don't know, I don't know what it is. Yeah. I'm actually pretty interested in things, but...
That's all. As soon as you want.
So first I want to just say publicly, you call me, Tammy, that's what, in my absence, she managed schools, and she did a brilliant job at it. Secondly, the entire custodial crew has been amazing, getting ready for, they're doing large. Josh has been unbelievable and he really has carried the weight of all of this on his shoulders and, um, he's been incredible. I'll let, I think Josh will probably speak to all of the things that have been happening as far as facilities, it looks great already, teachers have been in, most of the sessions are totally set up. We do have a tour for any student who feels like they want to see the school before it opens so that they can, especially for K one and two who have never been at Hill, all goes back tomorrow at two, Thursday, yep, Thursday. We're going to have student leaders in our different unified arts so that they can speak to the students who are coming up and tell them what happened in those unified arts blocks. We've asked teachers not to be there, our classroom teachers, so that it's not a, it really is just a facility. We do have thirty-two new students. We went from fourteen in our kindergarten classes to seventeen in eighth grade. I point that out because one of the things that I, I think is really something that needs to be considered is paraprofessionals, general ed paraprofessionals in our kindergarten classrooms, two years ago we got rid of those, to ask one teacher to man eighteen is a lot. One classroom, one teacher has four four-year-olds because the cutoff's not till September thirtieth, so that's almost running up preschool to third standard, I mean, does that, that make sense to you?
I'm worried that there's still a couple more, but you could even have it most.
We need to get in the public, in the public.
You know, and, and then we also have probably a higher population coming in, of students that need, that are on, and so that is another area of why we need that balance, especially in our kindergarten classrooms, we don't know what we're getting, a lot of times, they haven't been identified yet. Other than that, we really are ready to rock and roll, the teachers are in great spirits and they're, they've done a fabulous job of uniting as one team. I love that I can say that it really was two fantastic success coming together as one, and I, I think that it will be a really smooth transition, and I think that the public will benefit, having one elementary school in the district.
Any questions for me?
Come on, I'm going to wait, give me a question.
John? Hi, we're up and running. Not unlike the students, the custodial department has been outstanding, they always have, but it's, I mean, you get to walk around the building, a lot of comments are, the building looks great, and it's not, but you can still just have to really get after it and get things done, and that makes a big difference with arts culture, and the way people feel about, you know, when they go to work. We had teacher orientation yesterday, no, I bought it today, and that went well. We have Pembroke President tomorrow, where we have a fifth grade community spending three hours with us yesterday, less than very successful, they look at their schedule, they look at lockers, and, I mean, see where their rotation is, so without anybody else in the building, and that's worked really well, it's always exciting, but being in that, in the building. I, I do feel like I need to say that it's getting harder and harder, it's more finding teachers. It's been somewhat of an interesting summer as far as getting staff, I'm not sure what's going on, but I, getting more and more challenges, so, currently we are old, we do not have a kind of one condition, and some of the things that we post, you know, we have zero applications, you know, and usually we get some, but we're not getting anything in one issue that I've gotten, and learned over the years, you know, you have some, it's been a challenge, and I think it comes, I think there is more challenge, I was able to reach out, a couple folks that I knew, and we're quickly able to get a, I think, great decent course, people coming in. I think that's important to bring up, I'm not sure, I said, one of our goals this year is, we're funny, we're talking about it tonight, but Chris is going to be working with our staff to work on the assessment, our building's in a pretty good place with it, but I think now it's really, I'm wondering, when we start tightening that up, being consistent with the kind of, we're building, to make sure we are assessing what we want, what we want to get support, that's a little bit of a trick, and it takes a long time, it's not somebody who just kind of, long, ten minutes, takes a long pressure, the staff are really prepared for that, and anxious for it, and something for it to happen here.
No, Charlie, go ahead. And this is appropriate, as soon as it's coming up. I'm wondering if, and I guess, I don't know, do you, do you have a sense of not being a plant teachers, because that is more on the end of, there's a lack of plant teachers, or more on the end of, is our pay out of line with peer schools and are people staying away from kind of the...
There are only seven certification areas in the entire state that are not currently on the critical shortage list. This is, I email colleagues from around the state constantly, trying to find candidates for all of our schools, and even as recently as four o'clock this afternoon, I got a email from colleagues, we're, we're all strongly against that, because, I'm claiming right to the gap, but just the critical shortage list is a huge talent that no one can find teachers.
And it also relates to retirements, all that interest, recruiting, what's interest in the early, we lost, you know, we're quite frank, we lost both pre-terms recently due to the contract, I just, I got to put it out there. And I, and I do think while pay is, I did lose somebody to salary, to people with salary to go somewhere.
Quite honest. That, that equalize people's salary, but it's typically out of state, it's not feasible. And so that's, I don't think there's much we can do about it. I do think that, you know, John's forecast is accurate, and I think it's mostly a, you know, AP boomers are retiring, we don't have, you know, we see it, you know, pretty dramatically at my school, where the specializations are so extreme that it's very problematic. And I know it does come in ways, in New York State, I started a little group of education on higher end, my work, and I know, fact, like, there were so many, when we were at college, and then by the time we graduated, they were saying, we've got too many teachers, and, and some of those things just make it, I've been close, and hopefully it kind of comes the other way in a little while.
Sure. You have a question?
Oh, well, I need to lighten this place up a little bit, come on. We had teacher, we need teacher orientation today as well, a very successful program. We have freshmen coming in, new students coming in next Tuesday, for a half-day orientation, and then the floodgates open for real on Wednesday, where we welcome back everyone, and I have to echo what my peers have said, this building sparkles and it has for quite some time. time, Josh's staff has really, um, you know, hit the ground running ever since everyone left, and, and made the place look phenomenal, and I'm proud to open it up next week to our community, to welcome them back, so we look, we look good, we feel ready, and I think we're energized for this year.
Can I say a thing?
Nope.
All right, let me rephrase that.
We're getting there, Dan, we're getting good, we're not quite there yet.
And I, I know you guys are working on it.
Yeah.
My concern is we spent tens of thousands of dollars on new Alma system, and we're not able to get a schedule out before I've got this person at school, and their national per situation.
Yeah, not dissimilar, Dan can correct me if I'm wrong, not dissimilar to the presentation on mode versus average, uh, you live in some of these challenging times in real time, so when the schedule is built and crafted by hand, as Dan just wants to do, and then you try to transpose that into a computerized system, sometimes there are legit things that can be worked out, and you end up redoing things by hand, which is a big, a big, a big amount of time. I will give Dan, as well as our school counseling department, uh, oodles of kudos, because they have been putting in hours upon hours this summer to rectify the scheduling conflicts and make things right for students, but we don't want to roll something out in part, we want to make sure that we're equitable to all students getting their schedules up to, um, you know, currently, so that's what we're aiming to accomplish.
Are we still working with Alma, is it an Alma issue, is it a voting curve issue?
Jump in, Dan, water's warm.
When we, our last year's schedule was made in M M S, and then converted, Alma actually converted it over for us, so at the start of this year, we will have gone through the entire Alma experience, okay, and what that means, building a master schedule, going through all of that, I will say that the delays that we are encountering this summer don't have anything to do with Alma, there were some frustrations earlier on that did, and I, they are well aware of my feelings on some of that, however, uh, you know, we have some staffing issues, I mean, to me, one of the things I don't want to do is open up, you know, the, open up Alma to people, and then change their schedules under fifty to, you know, and, uh, I would much rather wait as long as we can to try to get qualified people in here to fill some of those roles, um, and, you know, so part of that is waiting on that, and we also, just within the guidance department, it's kind of a perfect storm in that we have a person that came on, and they've done very well, but in addition to that, we had an eternity to do, so there's, that's, we tried to address some of that, but, you know.
I know there are two people who showed the math department, you know, did you have that just one?
Uh, we're currently trying to build a transition, we're in transition. I hope they're.
Okay. Go ahead.
I, I'll try to, I'll, I'll read that the other word.
Just a quick question, don't need specifics, just general, I know with the end of last year, with the half-day and whatever, with the circle, there's a lot of concern, um, is there, has there at least been communication to the community of how they should handle this in the morning, are there?
It's forthcoming this week, we will do a one call now, the community call, or how the circle.
I guess I'm in trouble.
He did it before I did it.
I didn't have it to me, so I'll be able to pay for it. I'll be able to see that, yes. Anything else?
Do we have a decade throughout the calendar period, um, okay, what is it?
Five days.
But it's, because students have not had their schedules, and do not have their schedules, is there any thought to extending that for them?
Uh, there was that customer that brought that up, I haven't talked to, uh, the other administration to say about that, uh, we wanted to get a second road before tomorrow, before approaching that, but it hasn't been.
May I just say, to make sense, that given the fact that they don't have their schedules, um, that we should consider giving them additional, um?
Okay, anyone else? Okay, for the health school project update, are we doing that, Josh?
That's you.
No, no. Update? Yeah. Phil?
So, just to reiterate what the admin said, I just have to give my staff a little bit of trade, um, while we're going down that road, so they've been very busy taking care of not just the Hill Village, but all the buildings, um, specifically closing the village down, they've been there on any given day doing what we need to to prep for that, merging the Hill School, um, whether it's the staff at the Hill School, the, the custodians that are housed there, or custodians from the entire district, at any given day you can see any one of my staff members at any given building, um, and that's just a testament to them, to their commitment and how they're all looking for the type of effort, so that's first of all on the Hill Village. Um, second of all, last time I spoke about the Hill School, we had set the building, we were working on getting all the trades in, um, and had started that, so since then we've done our paving, uh, we spot paved around the building, um, we paved around some trenches at the dock, and then we added some pavement, helping the field areas in two different locations, um, to help replace some of the pavement that was taken away, um, with the modular addition, it wasn't the same amount of tar, the pavement that stuck away, so it was the best we could do in the, the situation, um, in the time that was given. Our plumbing was just, uh, our plumber went offsite today, we have running water out there, um, and we have working toilets. The power ever sourced was onsite as we started this meeting, um, literally hooking the building up on their end, all the power on our, um, electrician end had been completed, and we were just looking to tie those in, so those were tied in as we met tonight, electrician will come in tomorrow morning and officially turn us on. Um, gas, we are using a propane tank, we missed the gas conversion to a propane conversion on the tanks that are on the units, so when we had our tanks set a week ago, we had to stop the process, they're coming back tomorrow and Thursday to do the conversion to get us up and running, so not only do we have heat, and in their case, air conditioning, but more so we have air moving as those students and staff are coming into the building, as you would see in the majority of our areas. Um, the data in the phone lines have been hooked up, the last time we spoke, they've been run out there, they're currently working, our fire panel has been hooked up, we are online with the panel that's inside the school, something happens in either location, it acts as one. Um, lastly, we are looking to have some of our security cameras, we have the wires out there, we'll be adding those next week. Uh, with that being said, we collect the staff that are going in the modulars, we've moved them in, they've started to be some movement, um, them setting up their areas, um, one side's pretty good, the other side we're working on, um, and lastly, it's a testament that Susie and her staff inside that building, you'd be amazed at, at what's happened, so there's still a little bit of work to do, but without what Susie and her staff has done, we wouldn't be in the situation we are now, if that's, we could open that building tomorrow if we have to, so, so that's where we're at with, with Bill.
Does that filter part inspection by the time?
Um, we will do our inspections with our local enforcement, e-force and stuff, and that building will be treated as part of the Hill School.
Okay. Questions, Josh? Phil for break, Josh?
Thank you.
What? You all fine?
Great, great, Danny.
You push it out there?
Yep, we should have communication in non-public, um, which is why we have law letter B, and further action might be taken later, but right now, we're.
Okay, a little long take up, see you now, we'll get out in public. Uh, Paul, should you do?
Um, I would just let you know a few things, the E A S, um, that's a huge policy, Kathy did redline that, because she got rid of the line, so it doesn't need to be there, and Amber actually had pretty minor changes to it, so lots of them added to that as well, so we could look at that, um, and like I told you, it's really likely we'll need the requirements for us with D E for our grant, so, um, and then, nothing has changed in the school meal since last time, um, the V V D, board staff communications, I actually made you a packet, because, I mean, this is a thing, and I labeled them, because when he started out with this policy, uh, he had given us some input, so I actually, his, um, first set of comments was in the wayback, and then April has submitted some revisions, a little over in the middle, and they say April suggested revision, and then what's on top is the most recent response, so once April has made some suggestions, we had to send it back to Bean for his input, uh, and that's what's on top, is Bean's response to the pieces that April, um, had suggested, so we really should kind of review that now, I was thinking it might be easier to use it all in one place, um, and then be ready to load that hopefully at the next meeting. And then the high school credit, um, for some of the break course work that policy was on, it was at, I think it was seventy-eighty-five prior, and now on three, and on new company to be a great system.
Okay. Anyone who can read that?
I read it.
See what?
Jacob, um, I read it, I read it, yeah. The motion?
Motion to approve.
Right.
Seven.
Questions, comments? All, all there?
Aye.
Aye.
Any others?
Will you?
Yes.
Will you? Is that your name, Jane?
Yeah.
Uh, so, motion?
Yeah.
Like you, okay, you have a question? All there?
Aye.
Aye.
Down to you.
Two of us, well.
All right, Jen, I think, based on language, I think that's great.
Um, the, I enclose the copy of the N E A S report that came in, that the five-year arts report was approved, which is great, and there are, we have looked at it, it's good, because there were some really great combinations, and some hard work, um, F D A, so, with, with three, what with us letters, the N E A S and C.
S and C.
It was.
One or more of them.
Right, yeah, hold beam up.
The second item is, uh, an update on the student activities part, so Amber has been sharing, because that was something we were auditing, working on, uh, she came to our essay leadership routine this year, and reviewed all of the findings with our research team, obviously, and they use, one of the things that you may notice this year is, um, we had to change some of the ways that we do student activities, so for some of our classes, we charge a fee, so food class can be the food, we charge a fee, they want to take that class, that had been known to student activities, and then used for that program, so you can't supplement an academic program with student activities, so what will happen is, the budget will look like it's over expended, because we have to spend a ton of that out of the budget, but the money that would have gone into student activity will be put into unanticipated revenue as an offset, um, but it, this year, there's several lines that probably will look over expended, because we have to change the way, um, we do that budgeting, so that's what that will be, um, and then, oh, um, we, as we had indicated earlier, we are still down to math conditions at high school, um, some hard work and consideration, some classes were consolidated, um, there was a class that only had eight or nine kids sign up, so we didn't run that class, and, um, our solution that we've come up with for the remaining, we were concerned about the, um, algebra lab, that we wouldn't be able to run them with math, provided students were, um, significant amounts of support, it was a credit class, um, credit will not be given to the lab, however, we did find a way to provide that support, we're going to hire someone who's actually in the process of becoming a certified math teacher, and should be chief of certified math teacher partway through the year, but to hire them as, um, just a support person, so that they won't be giving any grades or credits, but the lab will be open for students to get support, and we're actually thinking of pushing him into a couple of classrooms to get support right in the classroom, so we'll lose that algebra, um, support that we had.
Okay. Questions, Phil? Would have anything else you'd like to add? I'll be coming. Bob, chance for the U, anyone?
I, I do have something.
Go ahead.
I apologize that I was spoken to earlier, if I made the observation, um, I've kind of touched base on it, um, during our end, um, I noticed that one of your newest elected members of this board, and so my count probably, my estimate, uh, means one in fifty percent of their meetings with this board, and from the sounds of it, she's not meeting her obligations ever other than in the middle of the board and other board committees. I know you probably can't remove this person as an elected official without going through the courts, I think I've read about it in the New Bern district, recently, I have similar situation, but it is my hope that this board is at least formally contacting this person to request that they meet their obligation as an elected official, uh, if not, you know, request their resignation, so we can get somebody in there to, to, um, it's very frustrating to me, and that sort of thing, that we have somebody who ran to take on that responsibility and is refusing to do it, so, I did.
Anybody else?
Uh, I just want, kind of, starting back to the bus thing, and a couple years, I think I would highly encourage that you watch that again, because I feel like, you know, transportation is charged around campus, so, for lack of a better way, but I just would encourage it to, just reach out, see maybe if there's other possibilities now, a couple years later, besides, don't like the way it's going to be dictated by this one person.
We do have a multi-year contract, remember, don't opt out my head, no one's out, but...
Well, maybe we do.
Usually they, but that comes out, that's every time.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Good, okay. Um, with that, we're going to go to non-public session, and we have your saving ninety-one, dash eight, four, three, two, four, and two, D and B, on the lower cover, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes?